We're back on the record. Do we need a roll call to adjourn from? Need a motion to adjourn from executive session?
To adjourn from executive session.
Can I second that?
And I need a roll call?
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Homan? Commissioner DeBrosse?
Can't vote.
Aye.
Well, he can, he can, we can call him, rule, call him, right?
We can mark him as, he's not present here in the chambers, but what we'll do in the minutes is mark that he participated in the meeting by non-voting, in a non-voting manner.
He can't vote.
Electronically.
All right, I need to amend the agenda to add in ordinance number O-14-24. I'll make that motion. I need a second.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. I need a roll call.
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Homan? Commissioner DeBrosse?
Aye.
For purposes of voting, Mr. Homan should not be voting.
Exactly, that's what I just said, so.
Okay, sorry.
President, there you go. All right, so, we will start with the consent agenda.
Approval of the minutes from the July 30th, 2024 city commission meeting.
Move for the approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? On to old business. Ordinance number O-12-24.
An ordinance to repeal Pickwa Code 30.15 in its entirety and to adopt new rules for commission. This is a third reading.
Frank, anything additional?
No, this, this code, or this change has been reviewed three times. We made some minor amendments to it. Those amendments are incorporated in the ordinance for the city's commission's purposes. I just want to restate that I've reviewed this ordinance myself and went through various case laws. The case I sent out of the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals sets forth what commit, what, it basically set boundaries up as to what you could and could not do in commission meetings. I followed that case in, in creating these rules. Mavirma attorney who was here reviewed the rules and had no objections to it. And, and the administration would ask that this, this ordinance be passed.
Any questions from commission?
Has this been sent to Mavirma for review?
Mavirma attorney who was here reviewed it. She's another attorney. Mavirma itself has not reviewed this. Nor do they, I mean, they can. They don't review everything that we do. I don't know, in this type of case, they may or may not review it, but.
Any other questions from commissioners? Comments? Any questions or comments from citizens?
Were you asking for question?
Comments on this.
On this, okay. I, I do have, but.
You can come, no, go ahead.
Girls first, girls first.
He could speak after. State your name, please.
Hello, my name is Alicia Wang.
Thank you.
9300 State Route 66. I am deeply concerned about the proposed restrictions on public comment, which appear to be targeting me and hindering my ability to speak publicly. The claim that only individuals from outside city limits have used vulgar language is false. Residents within city limits engaged in such discourse. It is troubling that officials are using this as a justification to limit public comment, especially when some individuals, such as the Benghazi rabbit, have never spoken publicly at a Pickwa city commission meeting. This violates our constitutional right to freedom of speech, which plays a crucial role in our system of checks and balances. I urge officials to reconsider these restrictions and uphold our fundamental rights. The proposed restrictions seem to be a deliberate effort to silence me from speaking at commission meetings about the city managers, the city manager's involvement in the dangerous lithium ion battery burning at the old water plant. It is alarming that my voice is being suppressed on such a critical issue, highlighting the importance of protecting our freedom of speech. I urge the commission to rethink these restrictions and ensure that all community members have the opportunity to address important matters. The impact of the battery burning at the old water plant exceeds beyond city limits, affecting our residents in surrounding areas as well. The smoke doesn't stop at city limits. Therefore, it is essential that individuals, regardless of their location, have the right to speak on this matter at public meetings. Additionally, while individuals from inside the city may have used vulgar language, vulgar language is protected under the First Amendment, underscoring the unjust nature of the proposed restrictions on public comment. It is imperative that all voices are heard to promote transparency and accountability regarding the consequences of the lithium ion battery burning and any other issues that those in the community feel are important to discuss. The community feels let down by our leadership, by your leadership, whether it was intentional, deliberate, or due to negligence, only you know. It is time for you to take charge and lead this town effectively. We need city leaders who advocate for all voices in the community, both within and outside city limits, and uphold the principles of the Constitution and the rights it was designed to safeguard. I have the constitutional right to decide when I want to speak publicly. You should not have the right to decide when I can speak. I should and I will. Public comment is not for people and individuals to simply praise you for your own egos. It is a platform for community members to address real concerns and discuss controversial and ethical issues. Thank you.
Anyone else in public comment?
Go ahead.
Kim Heisler, 1802 West Parkway Drive.
Hi, Kim.
Hi, guys. I know I've written you guys letters and I feel really deeply about this. Anytime any limitation is placed on the public, it is, it's huge. I know you guys mentioned there's many other ways, avenues to talk. You can text, you can call you on the phone and stuff like that. Those conversations are kept between those individuals having them. This is the only forum in which the, the community and you guys can have a forum where all 20,000 plus people can, can hear and see what those issues are. And I think it's really important. If it's going to take us 1,250 signatures to make any kind of change, once something is passed, how do we even do that if we don't even have this forum to be able to get folks to even see that there is an issue? There's, there's no way to do that. So I would, I would strongly say, please, consider any limitations at all and keep stuff as it is. The other things that I also wanted to, to take note on, is I know Tom had made a comment about having a start time and an end time to public comment, in the end time being nine o'clock, because, yeah, you just have to have an end time at a meeting. Having nine o'clock is great for you guys, because at any time, you can say, okay, meeting's over, no more public comment. The one meeting that you mentioned where they were talking about the mural, they had to sit there for two hours and 45 minutes before they could even get up to speak. And they were the very first ones up, so the comment cards and the meeting ending at nine is not very conducive, even though you guys can say, we'll let it carry on. Well, who's to say it might be a subject that really needs talked about? And there's 20 more people that want to talk. Two days later or two weeks later, when they can get up to talk, it's already, the point is gone, it's over with. There's, there's no way to address that. So my suggestion would be to make the meeting till 10 o'clock. Doesn't ever mean that it's ever going to take till 10, but it sides on the voice of the people, because when it's at nine o'clock and you guys stick to it, there's, there's no change in it, unless you have 1,250 votes to say, let's change it. So err on the side of the people and, and change it to 10 o'clock would be great. Also, it'd be kind of nice, I know you guys at the beginning of these meetings can change the ordinance or change the minute meetings and stuff like, to allow for no public comment. I know right now, special meetings, there's no public comment at the end, which, is there any way that we can limit that? Because who's to say that you guys don't make a special meeting, have them on Wednesdays instead of Tuesdays? There needs to be like a limit, because there's ways around this to cut our voices off. And I.
Didn't have a meeting on Tuesday, because of National Night Out. That's why we're having a special meeting tonight.
I understand, and the ways that you guys, and, and before it was like that too, there was, there was reasons, but that also leaves the door open to do it continually if there's, you know, issues coming up that doesn't want to be heard. It's an easy way to get out of it, so that's. I know you guys have done it right, I'm just trying to protect us in case, you know, things get heated at some time. And I know Frank said there wasn't many changes, but there were some changes that made. I'm not exactly sure we know which changes were made unless we actually hear that ordinance again, unless he tells us which ones that were, because in the packet, it said that the pub, he recommended the public comment to be before the meeting, because at least that's what it sounded like.
Frank, any changes were made from the last time?
Not since last time. The changes that were made were suggested by Mr. Homan. One was with the cards, after the cards were used, or finished up, that they, anybody who didn't sign a card would have the opportunity to come up and give public comment. The other change was initially the ordinance had a three minute for the business agenda part for public comments. That was changed to five minutes. And I believe, I can't recall off the top of my head what, if there was a third change or not, but I believe those were the two major changes to it.
So like the public, was it anything written in there? I know I'm supposed to be addressing you. Anything in there that said public comment was to be after the meeting started, before the ordinances or anything, or did I just read that wrong?
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Was there anything in there stating the public comment was to be before the meeting took place?
Yeah, and that was changed too.
It was changed.
Yeah, so ordinances, every ordinance will have public comment, just like they do now, okay?
For the ordinance resolution and at the end, because it didn't look like, it didn't look like it was changed, like.
Yeah, so every ordinance, you'll have five minutes to make a comment on.
Okay, the comment cards, I also wanted to mention too, that.
Thirty sec, your, your time has expired, I'm sorry.
Can I just mention the two other things?
Last one.
The comment. Okay. I think it's also imperative to have public, the comments, public comments dictated, because that is our only way to have like a written record and accountability with the city. I know you guys had mentioned that you wanted to take it out, because maybe they weren't written right or anything, but at the same time, I think we need to, as a city and as to get accountability, to build back our reputation and stuff, having it in there and having it accurate. If we have to spend more time to get an accurate writing and putting it in there, it just makes for more accountability. It makes it easier for the people to see what's happening and stuff like that, so that's, that would be my suggestion. I would appreciate if you guys could consider that when you're making your votes. Thank you for.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment?
Okay, can't dish out. Oh, we got, oh, Jeff, come on up. No, keep going, you're. Don't make me turn around. No, ain't gonna make you turn around.
Jeff Grimes, I'm not sure what address to give today. How about at large? So, if you guys remember, the city, you work for the citizens and, were your boss, so to limit any type of interaction or concern or discussion, I think is unconstitutional. And I'm, I'm not sure what the quote was, but I may not like what you have to say, but I will fight to the death to allow you to say it. So, if somebody comes up and has, has a concern for the town, it looks really bad that you only let us talk for five minutes. Doesn't, it doesn't help us get to the bottom of solving our town's problems. And I was wondering what was wrong with the way the commission meeting was before? Why did we decide that we needed to change this? It's worked for a long time. Why do we have to change this now? Also, you and I, Chris, have had the discussion, you're not allowed to clap unless you would approve of it. You said there's good clapping and bad clapping, and that's completely against what, what America's about. You have a right to express your opinion. We have a right to have our questions answered. So, I think that it should be longer time to speak. I, I can understand somebody getting up here like me and rambling, but five minutes and waiting two weeks to have your five minutes to discuss what's going on in the town is, is not enough time for the citizens, so. So remember that you guys work for us. And if we don't have a voice, why do we even have these meetings? Thank you.
Thank you. Paul.
Okay, there we go. Sorry, I, I was kind of wool gathering before. I saw Kim's email the other day and I gave this whole thing a really good long read. And yes, I've suggested a few replacements or, or edits here and there, and, and they've been largely adopted. But the more I look at, like the section with non-agenda public comment, it goes into great detail about what we want to hear and who we want to hear from. And the silent reversal of that is what we don't want to hear and who we don't want to hear from. And if it was really important to have people who live outside of the city limits proper not speak, that would have already been written into rules years ago. Absolutely years ago. So I don't think, I think that really flies in the face of the, of the First Amendment. Not because of, of what they're saying, but, you know, they're Americans, they, they should be able to speak. And I started looking at the rules of conduct, you know? Obscene comments. What's obscene? When I was a kid, I remember my folks going, "Ooh", because they, they saw Captain Kirk say, "Damn", or was it hell? It was one of the two. Oh, no, it was, let's get, he says, "Let's get the hell out of here", right? And he actually said that on TV. And it was the first time anybody had said that word on TV. And now George Carlin told seven words you can't see on TV. You can say pretty much all those words on TV. So the word obscene, things shift. The same thing with profanity. I'm not really a big fan of profanity, but when I broke my phone last night, you wouldn't have known that because things got a little profane. But, um, you know, uh, one man's profanity is another man's poetry, as, sometimes, you know? Hate-filled epithets. Well, I hate liver and onions. Well, that's filled with hate, but, you know, is it a hate-filled epithet? Loud and boisterous conduct. What decibel levels? That's very subjective, you know? Anything over 75 decibels, everything, anything over 100, you know? We, uh, we need to make those objective. And so I have some very basic issues with this as it sits, even with the third reading.
Any other comments from public or commissioners? Time to vote.
Mayor Lee.
You need a motion for-
Need a motion.
Anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution, or, excuse me, ordinance O-12-24.
Second. Moved and seconded, and can the clerk call the roll?
Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBros.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Nay.
Right. Doesn't it die and shouldn't it have four?
No.
It passed?
The rule is three. Always rule it three.
Rule of three.
Uh, unless it's waiving the three reading rule, which is four.
Okay. Motion carries. Next on our agenda, old business, ordinance number O-13-24, third reading.
An ordinance to make appropriations for the city of Pickwa, Ohio for the year 2024.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. This ordinance adjusts the budget and certain line items. And since the last reading, there was an amendment to this ordinance. And this is a $60,000 increase in appropriations in the Community and Economic, Economic Development Fund. And also in order to be able to, uh, appropriate that money in the Economic Development Fund, there was a transfer budgeted in the general fund of $60,000 as well.
Okay. It's a $60,000 transfer from the general fund to the Economic Development Fund.
That is correct. And this was for legal expenditures.
For what?
Illegal expenditures related to economic development.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions? Paul?
No.
Citizens, have any questions?
I'd move the adoption of ordinance, uh, numbers O-13-24 after the third reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded, um, I need a roll call.
Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBros.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Motion carries. That's it for, uh, old business. Now a new business is resolution number R-100-24.
A resolution authorizing transfers of cash from general fund to other funds for the fiscal year 2024.
Mayor and commissioners, um, this resolution is a, to authorize the transfer from the general fund. Even though you approved the ordinance, um, to appropriate the money, there has to be a separate authorization for the transfer itself.
Any questions from commissioners? Any questions from citizens?
I don't even know why I get up here to speak, but so many concerns on our budget again. If I'm reading this correctly, the golf course is getting another $225,000. And I thought the golf course got $100,000, not just a couple months ago. But I thought the golf course was making money. So huge amount of money being poured into the golf course. And what is, uh, what exactly is the Pro Pickwa Fund?
Gary.
That's an organization that, uh, we contribute to, uh, here at the city.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I said that's an organization that the city contributes to, a, a community, um, organization.
So they're going to give them $60,000. There's no breakdown of what that's going to go to. There's no breakdown on what the 225,000 is going to the golf course. The Fort Pickwa Plaza, it says another $425,000. And how many millions do we have in that thing now? And then if I'm reading correctly, there was $75,000 to run the Lock Nine Park. So, man, you guys are just spending money. That, there is no accountability. Can anybody tell me what the 225 is going to go for the golf course? Is there any, is there any breakdown on that?
Yeah, just a second.
It does, it doesn't matter. You guys are going to pass it anyways. It's a wasted time.
Thanks for your time and opinion. No other public comment?
Heisler, 1802 West Parkway Drive. Since Jeff brought it up, I would like to hear the breakdown of that. And I am kind of curious because, um, the golf cart, golf course, last I heard, wasn't even making money. So we're pouring money, more money into it. I, I don't understand that.
This was an unexpected increase to expenditures. We are, uh, programming a, a person to be hired in there and we're going to be programming events that'll take place, uh, for the rest of the year. So these weren't anticipated at the time that we set the budget last year.
At the golf course?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, that's, sorry.
What, what, wait, what are you, what are you talking about there?
There was nothing in the previous ordinance that did anything with a golf course. If you actually look at the documents that were provided, the column under the 2024 budget lists all of the, um, dollar figures that were appropriated to those accounts. The middle column is the increase or decrease, and that is which the previous ordinance dealt with, um, the increases and decreases from the various accounts that we just approved. So there's nothing in this previous ordinance that had anything to do with the golf course or the Fort Pickwa Plaza Hotel.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Thank you. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
So seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Last on the agenda, which was added late, is the ordinance number O-.
14.
14.
14-24, an ordinance to amend the, uh, land use, um, Pickwa Development Code. Kyle?
Yes, the, excuse me, um, Kyle Hankman, Community Services Director. The ordinance, ordinance 01424 is an ordinance to amend the land use development code. This is a particular case that regards Section 4.7.5D, which regulates flags. As part of, our code was adopted in June of 2023. It has been a little over a year now with this new code. As part of this code, um, we did modify the standards to our sign code as part of those changes, um, to come into compliance with federal law. Reed versus Gilbert was a very, uh, important case that defined the case law in the United States for sign codes. It obligates all sign codes to be content neutral. So our code, uh, does not define the content of signs any longer. We define the type of sign, as well as the time, place, and manner that those are able to be placed. So our code currently regulates, um, what we call, what you would traditionally imagine as a flag. It is a flag sign, right? And we define that explicitly based on the size, the shape, the location, and where it is placed. We do not in any way regulate the content of that sign. So, um, with that said, there has been concerns about some of the content of the signs, that are considered flags, and, uh, the number that is associated with that and whether or not someone would be permitted to have a certain number of flags on their property. After going through the Planning Commission and having a discussion, the Planning Commission did, uh, recommend in a five to zero vote to make the modification. The general modification would be that now flags on residential lots, there is no limit to the number of flags on residential lots. The, uh, limit on non-residential lots is still kept at three flags. But again, uh, the new language would state a maximum of three flags are permitted per non-residential lot, period. There shall be no limitation on residential lots, period. I can answer any questions that you may have. But again, the Planning Commission did recommend in a five to zero vote to make the modification to our development code sign standards under 4.7.5D1.
Any comments?
Oh, yes. Mr. Mayor, um, after reading this and seeing the narrow scope of what we're dealing with and that, yes, we're actually voting to let people do what they want with their property. Hey, what a deal. And that we have, the Planning Commission has recommended five to nothing, to amend, to, for, to amend the sections the way that we have. I would like to, uh, move that we waive the three reading rule and just vote on this tonight. It's a very narrow, uh, piece of work.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor of, uh, waiving the three reading rule, say it. Yes.
Do we need a roll call?
Do we need a roll call on that, Frank? Yeah, roll call.
Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder.
No.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBros.
Aye.
All right, so it doesn't pass.
On a three reading rule, you have to have four votes.
Okay. All right, so this will be a first reading. Of that, any comments from?
Mayor.
Yes?
Yeah, I would, I'd just also like to say, I'm strongly supportive of this. My question, uh, would be to Kyle. I, I'm not sure if I misheard you, um, but was it 4.7.4?
Five.
Five.
Section one, I thought I heard you read five E.
Yeah, I believe 4.7.5, excuse me.
D.
I have it.
Please double check that. I believe it's 4.7.4, not .5.
No, it is 4.7.5D1, which is flags.
Okay. I'll, uh, perhaps my, I am strongly supportive of this. It's my great, uh, shame that I was not present to vote yes on waiving the three reading rule and to vote yes on this. I would be strongly supportive of this, uh, ordinance when I return next week.
You'll have a chance on Tuesday to waive the three reading rule again. Any comments from citizens about this issue? No comments from citizen? That will serve then as a first reading and the end of business.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
I've got a motion to adjourn and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 I was just asking if you should. I wasn't making the motion.
I thought you said this.